The city council work session for City Beast's Grand Forks Tuesday, June 26, 2018 is now five o'clock. Would the city clerk please call?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel. Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Pakshavinsky.
Here.
Tim Riape.
Here.
Henry Tweetin.
Here.
Mark Demers.
President. Number one, request to use parking lot, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. I believe we do have some representatives from Sickies here as well that will address this. They put in or an application or they've asked if they could reserve some parking spots in the parking lot on the west side of the flood wall on Wednesday evenings for the rest of the summer for motorcycle parking. And we have allowed this in the past for that car show. That car show is no longer there. They've moved over to Grand Forks. And they're asking if they could put out some temporary signs, those type of things. I believe they've already, the motorcycle show has already started. They've had some of those coming up there. So we do have some history with that as far as how that's been working. But I guess I will turn this over to Mr. Raymond and he can speak a little bit about what they're planning on doing for the rest of the summer. And then when he's done, I have a couple more comments as well, if I may reserve that.
Yeah, we do Bike Night Wednesday nights and it runs from five to nine o'clock. So our thought was, and the problem we had is some of the bikers were parking on the boardwalk and, because there was no place else to park. And so our thought was, we could either do, put up temporary, you know, signs on Wednesday, like at four o'clock on Demers, directly in front of us, and just say, you know, temporary motorcycle parking, or on the other side of the flood wall. I know that they used to do the anti-car show there every Wednesday and stuff, and they don't do that anymore. But we need someplace to put them, so, because it's a pretty big night for us, so.
I know the last couple Wednesdays, I know you've had some motorcycles there and I know I saw that some of them have been on the sidewalk itself. Have you had any comments or complaints or anything with the ones that are parking up there?
Just the first night, but part of the problem was is they were parking actually on our property right in front of the patio there. But so many came, they started moving over and going in front of Mike's Pizza. And I think she called, because I know the police department called us and said, hey...
I'm talking about along on Demers there as well.
Oh, on Demers?
Yeah.
That was not a problem. The second Wednesday that we did it, I had parked my car there and one of the other managers didn't, and then we moved them. And so we were able to have all bikes there and that worked out fine. But we haven't had anybody else complain, no.
Can I be asked, Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So is this a show or is it just for parking?
It's, all the bikers come, the radio station comes every Wednesday and does a thing on the patio. And then all the bikers just come and bring their bikes and have something to eat and go home.
Okay, so it's not like we're displaying them?
No.
Okay. I guess my thought is, we've done it for the cars and I think we can do it for this. I just think, and my history only goes back so far, so maybe you guys could fill in the bikes, but Whitey's typically, in the past, has always had, or not always, but they used to have motorcycles parked out front, you know, right on Demers, you know, backwheeled to the curb and sticking out and kind of look kind of neat. And I think that does two things. It's, I think it's more visible. Number two, it probably takes up less parking. If you're fitting them along where people would be parallel parking, you could get two or three bikes in one car space where this is going to take up, you know, more if it's no's in parking or whatever. So I would, I guess I would think if we could accommodate them along Demers, it might...
And that would be our preference. We would love that, because it looked really cool when we had the whole one side. And we would make our own signs and put them up there. We wouldn't put them up till like maybe four o'clock or something and...
If you go back when Whitey's used to do it, did it just happen that way or how did that, how did that happen? I have no idea. Or maybe the bikers just said, that's how it was going to be in that...
Yeah.
Mr. Tweetin.
One of the things that Sickies have done since they've been here, they've been promoting. And it's important that we constantly promote the city. I drive by there and it's kind of interesting. I drive down one side of the street, there's 20 cars, 17 of them are from North Dakota and they go as far away as Alaska, so people love it. And you can drive the other thing, you find the same thing. Now, the thing about it is, if we continue to promote like we are as a city, we're going to be much, much better off. Other cities are trying to figure out ways of getting people downtown. And this particular business is well managed and food is good, but they have a positive effect on all of the businesses downtown. When they fill up there, upstairs in the two restaurants there, they're full, the parking lot is full, and it becomes a swinging city. We're not sleeping and I support it. There's some things that have to be set forth as the material furnishes indicate.
Has Mendat given us any further information as to what they want from us or...
Other than the...
Other than the ordinance?
No, unless, Megan, have you heard anything today? No, then no.
Basically, we do an ordinance, we file for the permit and it's done for the year.
And we just renew it each year?
Yep.
And I couldn't tell by reading it, is it active then for this year or would it become active after their annual meeting? Would it be active for this year once we filed it?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? I see none, sir. Appreciate it.
Perfect.
Could it, I wonder if it could be Demers and your side of the boardwalk thing?
That'd be awesome.
Just that side? Maybe we could work that?
That'd be really good, because we had about 108 last time and they were parking all over in the theater parking lot and whatever, and they all kind of, the whole idea is them all together if we can, so.
And maybe see about something like that?
Thank you.
Ready?
If I may, if you're going to do that, right, I would also make sure that they're not parking on the sidewalk then or the boardwalk. I mean, I think what ends up happening there is you now becomes a pedestrian vehicle incident or issue.
Right.
When they're pulling in, driving down there. I know they were careful, I was watching them from my office, but...
If we can park on Demers, I have no problem with them not parking there, that's fine.
No, I know that, but somewhere along the line, they're going to have to be notified that they can't be parking there, because if not, they'll end up parking there anyway.
Yeah. No, I'll have somebody out there make sure they're not parking there.
Okay. It's just a liability issue.
Thank you.
All righty. Move on to number two, consideration of RC Flarus site agreement. Mr. Stennis.
We've been here before a little bit and we're suggested that we work with the city attorney and I've done that a little bit. And Golstead has provided this contract in here between the RC Flying Group and the City Beast's Grand Forks. And I hope you've all had time to look at it a little bit and I'm willing to take any questions that we might have at this point.
Anybody have any questions for him on the agreement?
I just have one question. Do you feel that this will take care of your needs in the future?
Well, we certainly hope so, yeah.
You know, 10, 20 years and so forth.
Well, I...
Well, the thing is, no, but no.
That means we're going to be here 20 years. I'm as optimistic as you are.
I've seen a lot of things happen very quickly, but the thing is that, the thing, you want to build it in such a way, in such a location, it's an asset rather than a liability.
Correct.
And if you're going to be putting buildings in there, you don't want to waste the money.
That's correct.
It's nice to have greenbacks, they tell me.
Yes, it is. I think what you've seen there a little bit is originally we were talking about a 500-foot area there and that's kind of the development area. It's 1,700 feet we're asking for and what we're looking for is, on the north and south end of it, an overfly safety area. Under normal flying conditions, with normal airports, the airspace is regulated by the federal government. And you can't on the end of a runway build a six-story building or anything. There is a glidescope sort of thing. That rule and regulation is not there for modelers, so what I'm asking for is to reserve some space. And what could happen down the road, as I mentioned earlier, is if we start changing over and start working with the park board a little bit, it could grow. And I'm not sure, Henry, for sure what would, that would be. That would be down the road. Hopefully it does, and then we'd have to take a look a little bit, because even 1,700 feet might not be enough. It's very true.
Does it have any, create any problems for the air force?
No, it does not for the air, the air force is fine. What's good about the site we're at is we are out of the five-mile range of the actual airport.
Okay.
And so that drops a lot of rules and regulations right there. The problem they have in North Dakota is they have a lot of restricted space. And the restricted space is causing problems with the, working with model airplanes and the drone things. They have their corridor, they have it pretty well laid out. But there is a circle that has been designated because this is a unmanned aircraft test center, what, one of five in the United States. And so that goes into Minnesota quite a bit. You guys are covered under that and can take advantage of that, working with some of these other companies. And I have been approached by some people inquiring a little bit. If we get a decent runway and set up and things, there may be some requests that come to this council that say, hey, maybe we could use some of that space too. But that's, that would be a future thing like Henry's talking about a little bit. If we get into that, we may have to come back to you to see what those needs are, but it's an opportunity for the city.
Well, how about agriculture? That's being done, it saves farmers money.
Absolutely.
Have you considered that as another use for it?
Yeah, this is, some of the people that would be designing some of these systems and things are some of those people that have contacted me. At this point, they don't want to go there because it's not developed. And, but I'm hoping that maybe we can work on this a little bit. We could be part of this whole, this whole thing that's happening, not only STEM and kids and things like that. This last Wednesday, we had a... How old is that boy, Mark? Is out there 11, 10, 11? 10 or 11 out there and he's learning to fly. And we'd like to get, encourage more kids to use this facility rather than their backyard or around a ball diamond, there might be people or things like that. Let's come on out, let's use the facility that's there. And we'll set up the guidelines and the rules and make it safe for the children. And then you also got like the farmers, they're going to depend a lot on companies that develop things for them, and they're the people that may want to. We don't, as a, as a group, we will control the facilities and things, but they're the sort of people, they might have to come to the council and work something out with us. But I never know. Yeah, Andrew's absolutely right, they could go somewhere.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. It doesn't show on your site plan, but you talked about controlling the site. Is there any possibility of like gating?
Yes, yes, there is. And in here, it gives us the permission to put a gate up. Right now, the ditch is pretty deep and it'd be real hard to get over that, so we're talking about just a gate on the approach there.
Well, I guess, and this would be centered on that existing approach, right?
Yeah.
So I guess my thought would be, and I don't know if we want to write this into the language, but that any gate would have to be on, like, on the north side of that. You know, you would, you would still, the city would still have access to that access?
Oh, yes.
If we wanted to come off?
Yes.
And then have the gate to be to the north, you know, running east-west, instead of have the gate run across that access?
Well, the way we're, where we're working it now, you can ask, where's Jason over there? We've been working very, very well with a gate system and a lock. And in fact, there've been three locks on there, they're all got a code that goes into it, or two of them got a code. I guess the city has a key one, we have a coded one, and Zabrels had a coded one and the Border Patrol had a coded one. And the city one, I think, was used by Mike, the police department. I think he used the key one and the city used that. And we all are on daisy-chained on this chain. And it seemed to work very, very well. Right now, when the new contractor comes in, it gets a little confusing. We're going to have to, we've agreed to let them get started and then we'll work on that some more. But it's mostly a lock like that works really nice with the code and Jason has all the codes.
Okay, I just, I'm just wondering what might happen with that other side of the field as we dry that pond out? We might be able to use it for other things. You know, you might be able to rent that land out or whatever. So I'm just trying to think ahead of blocking that access. Instead of having to put in a whole nother access for if someone wants to farm it, then they don't have to come through with a gate or...
Yeah, there is, there is, on the north, there's one more, well, actually, there's an axis, I think on both north and south of where we're at a little bit. That axis, I believe, was put in there for purpose back in 97, you know, and was used, I think it was 97, whatever year it was. And so that allows in that center area, there are ditches for drainage for those fields there, and I think they need to be there, continue to be there. And this allows us into the one section where that drainage is. And then we have that safety zone on each side of it.
And then you talked about airspace. Now, this doesn't, this doesn't set any restrictions on where you can fly, right? Is there any, would there be any benefit to restricting in this argument or in this document or this agreement? Like, anything south of, you know, you talked about a 600-foot glide path, anything foot south of like 900 feet would be on, you know, trying to keep the planes and the aircraft going north rather than south, I guess?
It might get a little more confusing there a little bit. The FAA does control that airspace, pretty much. And there's an elevation of 400 feet that goes and, you know, you own the land, but you don't own the airspace over here. But there are regulations and rules that cover that a little bit there. But we, we have to keep in sight and you won't find us going very far off of that. It's very good thought, though.
If I may, Tom?
Yes.
Just add a little bit, the safety zone on either end is not for regulations. It's just simply to keep the modelers safe and to keep anybody who may approach the space safe. If a modeler wants to go beyond that 600 feet, that's up to them and the AMA insurance coverage that we had would adequately cover them if something did happen outside of that space. Nobody is telling us from the AMA that we have to have the 600 feet on either side, right, Tom?
That's kind of, if the, if the city allowed some of that space, we're talking right next to our line to be used and their personnel on it and stuff, we can't fly over the top of people. So we're restricted that way a little bit. It could be, you know, some of the, you can work over the top of a field in the farming, we just, we have to not fly over the top of somebody that's out there working in the field. And you have a crop sprayer not far from there too, and crop sprayers are a unique little position there. But all you do is you're required, we have to yield to a big plane. So a big plane comes over, down on the ground you go. And you just got to use a little common sense, just like yielding them right away with a car at an intersection. It's not marked, that's not controlled. You got to, there are those rules of how to yield.
Even if the plane is below the 400 feet ceiling?
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions? I see none, sir.
Okay.
The only thing that I would ask is if you could add to your site plan where the safety netting was going to be, and then if you're going to be putting anything on the other side to designate this extended area, to have that located on the site plan, because I'm going to put that as an attachment to the, to the document.
Okay. We can work on that site plan. Some of that, you know, exactly where the, it ends up exactly, we can get that down? Is that what you're thinking around?
But I understood that you, you know, previously you provided us with a, with a safety fence plan.
Mm-hmm, yep.
You indicated that it was on here but not designated.
I didn't label it correctly, yeah.
You know, so if you could do that and then just, and the document allows us to go out 1,700 feet or restrict it further if we need to. And actually, it allows the city to terminate at pretty much any time. Not that they're thinking about doing that, that's just for everybody's benefit to understand that we're not tied in to, to not developing that property if it doesn't seem to be working out.
Sounds good. We can live with, it's 10 days to move out, so we're not a very permanent sort of thing. We can pull the fence posts out real, real quick there. But that's true, the safety fence, what we do is go by the guidelines of AMA. That's the basis for your insurance, your $2 million coverage in there too. So we stick with their guidelines and work on that. And if you want to see, what we're going to set up is very similar to what we are using out there, and you're all welcome to come on out and take a look.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric. Move on to number three, consideration of bids for 2018 assessment job number one, street and pedestrian improvements. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, so we opened bids for your 2018 assessment job number one, street and pedestrian improvements. On Monday, June 18th, we did receive a total of two bids. The apparent low bidder at this time is Op Construction out of Grand Forks. The project cost did come in, the bids did come in approximately 15% over my estimate. So kind of went back, reviewed the bids. I guess I was kind of interested too where, you know, the numbers are, where contractors put their dollars or whatever. But I think overall, kind of in my review, looking at, you know, kind of what my estimate was on, on a lot of the items, and then comparing Op and Strata Corporation's number, I may have been light on a few of my unit prices, which, you know, kind of contributed to the overage. So basically, what I did right now is gave you kind of a proposed budget with the $1.28 million figure from Op Construction. Comes up with, you know, a total project cost of about $1.67 million. So then I kind of gave you a breakdown of, you know, how that cost would be covered. The city is receiving $860,000 in federal sub-target dollars. There are some TRLF bond funds that the city does have available, and they amount of about $68,000. Currently, in the city's state aid allocation, balance is about $577,000, which leaves basically about $161,000, you know, that we got to pick up somewhere that I just listed as city funds. We were going to try to meet with Carla Monday afternoon, but then she kind of left for the week. But she did let us know that right now, the city's state aid, state aid maintenance balance is about 100 and, almost 171,000. Which she said, you know, that 161 could come out of that balance or out of that fund. Another thing, I have talked to the state and we can always advance funds if we want, so we could advance our stated allocation funds. So essentially, what we would receive next year, you know, they would just pull out that 160,000 from what we receive next year. So, I mean, we always have that option too, to pick up those additional funds, so. Right now, basically, the Office of Civil Rights is reviewing the bids to make sure that, to assure compliance with DBE goals and on-the-job training requirements. We did hear back from them. They have approved the on-the-job training requirements that Op Construction did submit to them, so that has been approved. So essentially, the only thing we're waiting at this point is just to make sure that they pretty much met the DB, DBE goals. They didn't meet the goals, so then what the Office of Civil Rights kind of assures is that they made the good faith effort during the bidding process to reach out to DBE contractors. So all that information has been submitted to them. I'm hoping yet this week, we will find out and hopefully get kind of the clearance from them that, you know, if the city desires, they can award the project. So I guess, like I said, at this time, you know, if we don't have clearance before next Tuesday, the city council actually could not make, or could not award the project at that time, so. I guess I'm willing to open it up for any questions, I guess you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Emery? Mr. Pakshavinsky?
Could we, could we look at prioritizing these projects and, and cut something out of it to get it back down to within budget?
At this time, the way it was set up, I bid it as one project. We have done that a lot in the past where we all...
But the assumption for the contractors is it was this size project and if we start chipping away at it, then, okay.
At that point, you'd probably have to just reject the bids and start over.
Yep, understood.
I think we've had a concern in the past that by having it too broken up, they might bid a higher number, just because of the confusion? Yeah, whatever.
Well, and I anticipated doing that. I kind of got some direction from one of the council members to kind of bid it as one project, so that was kind of the direction I went. I mean, in hindsight, I wish we'd have gone the other direction, but we didn't, so I think at this point, we either, we either got to award everything or basically reject it and, you know. At this point, if we rejected it, then my recommendation would be, you know, we hold off and we advertise come December, January. I mean, there just wouldn't be time, it wouldn't be feasible to try to rebid it and get the construction done this year, so. I did have in the contract, and I think we'd still try to shoot for, is, I think for the entire project, we had like an October 31 completion date. I did have in there though, that the work on proposal two, which is the Bigland Road, 13th Street Southeast, where we're doing the pedestrian improvements and stuff, that work needed to be completed by like August 15th. And I would try to get that done before school starts, so.
As you, as you went back and reviewed where they came a bit higher, now does it look reasonable to you? Or would you say, no, I think if we rebid it, somebody's going to hit that lower number? I mean, it's hard to know, but...
It's hard to know. Like I said, I looked at my estimate and then I compared Op and Strata. And like I said, I think, you know, some of this sidewalk curb and gutter repairs, I mean, I probably was a little low on my numbers, so I don't think rebidding it, you're going to see a huge decrease.
Anybody else have any questions at this time? So once you get everything approved, we'll come back and say...
Yeah, so I guess, you know, we'd look for is if we do get kind of the clearance from Office of Civil Rights this week, you know, then we would be looking for you to decide if you're going to award the project next Tuesday or, you know, reject the bids and rebid it on all early winter type of thing.
Thanks. What's our annual state aid allotment?
I think total, we get about $680,000. And then about 25% of that goes into maintenance fund. And then the 75% of the amount goes into state aid allocation, so.
One more question, is it the, particularly the federal dollars that bring in some of the civil rights stuff? The state funding doesn't typically bring that in?
No, not typically, it's the federal ones.
Anybody else have anything? Back when you know everything else, so. Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
All right, number four, report on findings on pay plan study. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. We have Tessa Melvin here with David Drowden Associates. They're the company that we contracted with to do our wage comparison study, our wage analysis study, to see where we fit as far as in comparison to like-sized cities and our surrounding area. I believe in Tessa's PowerPoint here, she goes through a little bit of her background and her qualifications for doing this. So she is here tonight to present what her findings are as far as where we sit in comparison to those. We have started some initial discussion as far as what our options would be for implementing this, this plan if we do go forward with that, and what those potential costs would be. We are not through that yet, so we just want to get this presented to the council, get any feedback from the council, and then we will be putting together what the different implementation options are and what those costs will be. So I guess at this point, I will turn it over to Ms. Melvin and she will tell us what she found.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. Tonight, I just want to go through kind of our methodology, what we did, the project results, recommendations and kind of implementation possibilities, the next steps, and then answer any questions, so feel free to stop me at any point and ask questions. So David Drowne Associates, we've been around for nearly 20 years working with local governments. It kind of started on the finance side where they do bond sales, TIF district, economic development, and then about five years ago, our clients came to us and said, hey, we really need help in HR, can you grow your business? So since then, we've been growing our business in HR. I think we're a little bit different than most consultants is that we are all practitioners, so we've all been in city or county government, so we not only know the... Am I not loud enough?
It's cool. There. You're going to have an eye.
All right, sorry. I have never been told I was quiet, so I'll take that as a compliment. So we're just a little bit different because I've been a city administrator, I've worked in county government. I think we understand how government works, we understand your role as a council, as taxpayers, what these kinds of study mean, and as an employee, we also understand that, so we're a little bit different, I think, than most. I lead the practice area of classification and compensation study. I've worked in city and county government for 15 years and I have a doctorate in public administration. Other team members are included. David Drowne is the president and he actually, right now, is doing a lot of the data analysis for me as we're growing this field. So what our project kind of looked like is we did a wage analysis of all the positions, a market analysis with comparable communities and benchmark jobs. We call those jobs that are a little bit more difficult to retain, recruit, maybe they provide special services. We wanted to make sure unions were included as well, so we have fair numbers and we actually, when we do that, we do not just the wage, but we'll go apples to apples. So in other communities, we may call this position X. What is education and experience needed for that? How big is their department? Do they supervise? Those kinds of things, so we can really drill in. And then other compensation, so we look at benefits, but then we might look at pay on call, callback pay, those type of things that would affect the total compensation. We then evaluated and classified the positions. We didn't have to do job descriptions, they were provided to us up to date, and then we calibrated a wage scale. Tonight, we're here to look at the budget analysis and then the final report. So approved benchmark communities, those were the ones that we looked at. Similar sized geographic location, we look at tax capacity, we look at tax rate of comparable sizes as well to see, and then obviously to make sure we're providing service levels as you have a lot of services that most cities don't, so we wanted to make sure we included that and in cases where we didn't, we expanded.
May I interject in there?
Yeah.
In one of the, one of the criteria that we looked at, since we are in a little bit of a unique situation, is that we are a city that is connected to a larger city even though across the border, there wasn't one exactly like that, but, so we did look at ones like Herman Town, which is connected to Duluth, Baxter, which is connected to Brainerd in Wade Park that is connected with St. Cloud, so they're similarly, a smaller city that shares a border with a larger one.
Good point. So in the report on there, it's a little harder to see, we just kind of show the dots are where the East Grand Fork salaries are, the orange is kind of the benchmark range that we found, and then the gray or the light blue is kind of that max. So overall, the city is right where it needs to be. There were a few positions, I would say employees in those positions that were slightly under the market men, not specific positions, but you've been keeping up kind of your pay plan and your pay philosophy, so there weren't a lot of adjustments, but just some have And this just shows East Grand Fork's current salary to the benchmark salaries, so you can kind of see this is what the current market is paying these positions, so it doesn't look at tenure, it doesn't look at the service level of like your fire department and library, you have a higher service level and do more than most communities your size would do, but it's just looking at what the market is currently paying. And then one of the things we wanted to do, and Grand Forks was very cooperative, is we wanted to say, okay, here's our positions in East Grand Forks, what do you call them in Grand Forks and what are you paying? So if you look at their men and max, you're pretty close, the lower end, you're a little slightly lower, and then the top end, they obviously have a larger wage range, but that's to be expected with the circumstances of a different state. So this is, just shows what your current pay system is doing, it just shows kind of everyone is falling within, some of the people are already maxed out. That makes sense with tenure, with having to hire people, that's very typical to find. We kind of fixed a couple areas with the new system and the old system, just to account for some of the things that we found in the market and just to make sure that we're paying where we should be. Part of this, that we do this is for your pay equity report. The city is required every three years to do a pay equity report, Minnesota's the only state that requires this, and if you fail, you don't get your state aid. So it's important that you pass and that you have all the documentation to do so, and that report strictly only looks at internal pay, so pay within the organization, so we wanted to make sure what we were doing doesn't conflict with that as well. So when we kind of look at options, I mentioned, and in the report I specifically spelled out, you have 11 employees, and that doesn't mean positions, but just employees in those positions that are currently under what the market is paying that position. And if, on page 18 of the report, it shows what those positions are, the number of employees in those positions that would be affected, and then what that total cost is. So if you said, that's our, that's one thing we want to do as a council, we want to make sure they're above the minimum pay range of the market, it would be about $19,000. So then we look at kind of option two. We provided, looking at what you were doing and kind of projecting, if you provided a 2% increase for your COLA and then move eligible employees into the new system, I did look, and with the new system and where your employees are currently paid with tenure and stuff like that, there would still be about 20 employees that would be above the pay system out of their wage range just because of their tenure, which is typical. So that total cost and, as David mentioned earlier, not exact numbers because we're still tweaking. I have numbers projected for 1231 of this year and you have some vacant positions, so how you fill that will obviously skew those numbers a little bit, but if you're looking at providing a 2% COLA to all employees and then those that are eligible to have a step increase, it would be about $165,620. So next steps is to kind of look at the pay structure. We made it very similar to what you currently had, we just made some market adjustments. Job classifications, those are in the report, that would be the next step after the council looks at this tonight, is for the employees to see what they were classified at. They can then appeal that process, that allows them to say, you are missing something in my job description and it is X, and because this is missing, I think that my job should be reclassed. Now, all employees did look at their job description with their manager, supervisor, prior to us doing this study to make sure their job descriptions were updated as best as could be. They can do that. They can't appeal the pay because that is determined by you all, but they can say, hey, I think my job classification is wrong and it's because something is missing in my job So once we would send that back out, they usually get a week to look at that to say yes or no. If we had any appeals, I will look at them, make a recommendation to the project team and then bring those back to the council with what their appeal was, what we found, and the recommendation from the project team. So part of this process was meeting with the department heads in the beginning to kind of set what jobs we should be benchmarking, to set what communities we should be looking at, to kind of explain what the process would be, to try to keep it as transparent as possible. That's why we also included, made sure the job descriptions were up to date, and then the classification appeal is for the employees to say, okay, and looking at where they're projecting, here's what my job description says, this is where it's classed or this is where I'm valued at the organization. I either agree or I don't agree. If I don't agree, then we need to know what's missing in the job description.
All right, so I guess at this point, we don't need any action from the council right at this moment. What we're going to do, we just want to present this to the councils, show you what the findings were, give you the opportunity to ask Ms. Melvin any questions that you might have. So now that this has been presented to the council, the next step that I will be taking is I'll be giving this to the department heads and the unions and the employees as well, for, as Ms. Melvin said, for the review, any questions or comments or concerns that they may have regarding those positions. Once we get that back, we will, in the meantime, we will also be determining what the, or nailing down what the costs of the different options would be, and we'll bring that to the council for action, I would say, hopefully, end of July, first part of August.
And we just wanted to have preliminary, so going into budget, you kind of see what we're looking at and what that looks like. There could always be a hybrid option as well if we have to do something else, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your option one, you talk about the 11 employees that are currently under the market minimum, but then you also talk about there's 20 employees roughly that are above due to longevity or length of employment. Do you, so is this just like one snapshot or do you project those 11 employees through the next 10 years to say, okay, in five years, if they progress through our steps, will they be in the market or will they be?
Sure.
You know what I'm saying?
No, that's a good question. So we actually look at what we call, we call it an adjusted tenure, so we would look at what you're currently getting paid based on your tenure and how many steps the city has. Most organizations like East Grand Forks has between six to 10 steps, pretty typical. What we've found though is currently, there are 11 employees that are under the market men, so if I was one of those employees, I could go to one of those communities or surrounding area and I would get paid more starting. So they'll never catch up unless they're not meeting your COLAs and that, so they might, but it's hard to tell based on COLAs change, the market changes, and steps, but what we found with those is we'd want to be careful when you hire to bump that minimum range up just a tad, so you're getting people in those positions.
But how do you get, if you're starting lower but then ending, or if we've got people that are higher on the top end, so to me, it's telling us, yes, we may be, we may have some people at the lower or below minimum at the starting range, but if they stay here a while, they'll be progressing through because our steps are situated.
I'm sorry, I should clarify. So those 20 aren't above like the market per se, they would just be out of range, meaning that they're at their top of their pay scale, and that should be the case when an organization says we want to have a pay scale, it's saying that in this organization, we figure it's going to take 10 years to become fully competent in this area, to totally get it, or we hire in with more experience, we can place them at a higher level. So it's not saying that they're above the market, but they're not going to get any more steps. So they will get your COLA, but with your pay philosophy, they won't get another increase. Does that...
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that if we do this, we don't, we don't just say that, well, yes, our low end is low and then all of a sudden, we move those up, but then...
Yep, no, and...
They move them through the system.
We're keeping, when we look at it, we kind of look trifled, so when we set the new pay structure, we kind of look at what the market is saying, so we want to make sure we're in align to that, and if we're not, you have some positions that are going to be above the market and that's because the service level that they provide, the call volume, those type of things, and that's just, you have to for your retainment and recruitment, but we look at that, then we'll want to look at the internal equity, that pay equity, to make sure if I'm a grade 10, I'm getting paid exactly what another grade 10 in another department is, and then we want to project, so we want to make sure that we're hiring, you know, competitively, but keeping them because we don't want to hire and then all of a sudden, they can make more and then they leave in three to five years.
Tessa, if you, if you would, could you elaborate on that a little bit as far as what you had found with the areas that, where we are higher than, there's really, there's really two areas and there's a reason why we are higher than in those two fields?
So your fire department and your library are higher in the market. One, a lot of communities don't have the library that you guys do, the service level that you guys do, so it's hard to benchmark, so we had to expand those communities. And two is your fire department. They're not only doing calls here, but you have a lot of mutual aid calls in Grand Forks and surrounding communities, so your department doesn't act like a East Grand Fork size, it's larger, and that's part of it, and part of it is the other pieces that they're doing for the city. So when you look at it, yeah, someone would say, well, our fire department's a little higher, but not when you're looking at the service level, and that's why we do those benchmark to say apples to apples. What are we really looking at?
Thank you.
Any else have any questions to respond to?
Okay. Yep, yeah, exactly. The next up, we'll get this to the unions and the employees and then we'll bring it back for action.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you for your time and thank you, David and Terry, because they've been really helpful getting me stuff so we can project as close as we can for budgeting purposes.
The senior center in our budget, our building maintenance budget for the city, we planned on $14,000 for this year to replace all of the windows, all the exterior windows at the senior center. In receiving some price estimates and quotes back, I found that in order to really to get a high-quality window that we feel like will stand the test of time there, the pricing for those is coming back higher than the $14,000 that we had planned for. So I brought forward two price estimates for you. The first one being provided by Windows Plus, that is a Marvin window and Infinity by Marvin, and the second price being from A&amp;L Siding, which is renewal by Anderson windows. The first price, the Marvin window, the price was $21,202.29. The renewal is $15,226, and again, that's to replace all of the windows. On the north side of the building, they're just a single casement window, half of them are operating, half of them are just stationary pitcher windows. On the south and east side of the building, right now, they're casement windows that are crank-out casements. These windows that are priced are for a sliding window. Going back through the pricing, when we first started, we started getting casement and those are by far more expensive than the sliders are. And you see on the price quote that's provided by A&amp;L, there's a third option for just a pitcher window on those that are on the south and the east side of the building, and actually just a solid piece of glass is still a little bit more expensive than the glider or the slider is. So I think in the style of window we have selected here, we're still getting a really easy-to-operate, easy-to-clean window, and it's the cheapest option we're going to have for it. Really, the difference in the two windows is in the renewal by Anderson, it's a, the frames are made of what's called Fibrex, it's a fiber composite wood composite mixture, so that has a limited 20-year warranty on the frame itself and then the glass and everything has a little different warranty on it, but really the thing to focus on and the difference in the two windows is what the frames are, consist of. The Marvin, the Infinity by Marvin is a fiberglass frame and that has a limited lifetime warranty on that frame. It's, I would say even just in the review I've done of it and meeting with both salespeople that they're both quality windows and quality frames, but the fiberglass, the one by Marvin is going to stand up a little bit longer than what the Anderson is. So we brought all this forward to the senior center board of directors at our last meeting, knowing that we're over budget from what we had planned. Their question was, first off, was could we just split this into two years and do a little bit this year and a little bit next year to be able to make sure we're under budget? I brought that back and their recommendation that they'd like to see the Marvin... that back, and their recommendation that they'd like to see the Marvin by, the Infinity by Marvin from Windows Plus, being that they feel it's the highest quality window that we could get. So I brought that back to Ms. Anderson to see what she thought about it, and she indicated that in the building maintenance fund, we do have the dollars above what we had planned, above the $14,000, to be able to do that window. Just one area within parks alone that I know that we didn't spend what we had planned is, of course, that painting the VFW arena. We had $40,500 planned for that, and the price came back at $30,000, so there was an extra 10 there. But just, I guess, at this point, I would move forward with the recommendation from the senior center that we should do the Marvin windows from Windows Plus, and open to any questions that anybody has.
I'd like to make a comment. Mr. President, I have that type of window myself and replaced it, and it's definitely energy-saving. And we've been replacing the windows in libraries. Same window, or is it a different one?
We haven't replaced windows.
Yeah, but they, they're all good windows, but the thing is that I have used Marvin windows in other buildings, and I support that very strongly. And I'd like to say one other thing. The senior center is making a substantial improvement on that parking lot, which is important, because that, a lot of traffic goes down Reinhardt Drive, and it catches your eye right away. It's going to look real nice.
And Mr. Repel?
I'm on that committee, and I pushed for the Marvin windows, because I replaced every window in my basement in the old house after the flood with these particular windows. And the 16 years we were there, they're great windows. They're really solid, and they put them in right, and they do a good job. Company is really good. That's why I recommended that one. The difference in price, it's worth it.
Anybody else have anything to add, or question?
The only other thing that I may add is, the senior center in Grand Forks has the same windows, Marvin by Infinity, and I did take a trip over there to see them. They installed them somewhere between five and seven years ago. The salesperson that I worked with did the job over there, too. And looking at them, seeing them five to seven years old, you wouldn't know that they're that old. I truly, that's my only experience with them, is seeing those, but I truly do think it's a quality product.
They were exceptionally clean, too.
Yes.
Anything else from anybody? I see none, sir. Thank you so much. Number six, update on tobacco assessment from Polk County Public Health. Chief Headman?
Thank you. With me today is Bethany Satcher from Polk County Public Health, and we're basically just going to be passing around some information regarding tobacco compliance, tobacco situation in Grand Forks, and underage tobacco use.
So we have had some data come out based on youth tobacco. There's a Minnesota youth tobacco survey, which found that tobacco use in youth has increased for the first time in 17 years, which is something that's alarming to us at public health, working in prevention. And this is highly due to new products that are on the market called e-cigarettes. You may have heard of them, or have seen them. We also found that our Minnesota student survey in 2016 found that 23% of Polk County 11th graders reported using an e-cigarette. And this is something, just to show how new e-cigarettes are to youth and to the market, that question wasn't even asked in that survey in 2013. That survey's done every three years. And so, you know, it just shows how much it is on the rise. We've also found that about 18% of high school e-cigarette users have reported getting them directly from vape shops or e-cigarette stores. And many of Polk County youth report first using a cigarette before the age of 13. Students or youth who are using, are using e-cigarettes are very often co-using, so meaning that they're using traditional tobacco products along with an e-cigarette, about 1 in 5 high school students. And so what we're here to talk about today is just youth tobacco use, and how we know it's on the rise. We know that it's dangerous for youth. There's no level of nicotine that's safe for an adolescent brain, because it's still under development. And tobacco can often be what's referred to as a gateway drug, so meaning they'll use tobacco and then go on to use other substances, such as alcohol, marijuana, things like that. You do have some supplemental material in front of you, too. So there's a Polk County profile that kind of breaks down some tobacco stats with both adults and youth, as well as the county Clean Indoor Air Act, counties and cities that have updated that to include e-cigarettes. That's something that a lot of people don't realize, with e-cigarettes, because they're new on the market, our current federal Clean Indoor Air Act does not include like privately-owned workplaces and restaurants. And so most cities and counties are following the federal guidelines, meaning like a privately-owned restaurant, if they wanted to, they could allow the use of those indoors. And so considering updating that ordinance would be one thing. Just going from kind of the youth perspective, I did talk to Nick Gunderson a little bit on what he's seen in the high school, and he shared that he, he feels e-cigarette use is up just based on what he's been confiscating, as well as what kids are telling him. And I do have some products with me. If you, you know, haven't seen them before, or you're just curious, I'll pass these around. I would suggest that you keep them in the bags, as they can leak the e-liquid. How these are used, is they're what's called vaped, so it promotes, or it creates a vapor that people breathe out. So a lot of times, youth don't realize that, or don't consider that vaping, using an e-cigarette is smoking, or is nicotine use. And so they, they don't make that, that connection. So Mike's going to share a little bit about some compliance checks that we did in East Grand Forks?
In early May, we had actually applied, Bethany made us aware of a grant available through the state of Minnesota, where we were able to get $40 per tobacco retailer in East Grand Forks, if we did an educational-only compliance check. So that, for the most part, covered our costs regarding doing a particular compliance check. But there couldn't be any penalties, though. As I mentioned, it was purely educational. We ran this, I think it was the second week of May. And unfortunately, three of our eight businesses failed the compliance check at that point in time. If they passed, which five out of the eight did, they got a certificate of appreciation from our officer, Cheryl Rehner, was the one that did the compliance check, along with two of our local high school students. If they failed, they received this informational letter from the state that gave them all the information about, you know, why these checks are important, why it's important for them to keep tobacco out of the hands of youth, et cetera. And also some information from the State Department of Human Services, where they can get additional information to help them out if they so choose. That, you know, obviously was disappointing, that we had three failures, but we are going to be alerting them, that we will be doing additional compliance checks over the course of the year. Our city code does indicate that we're supposed to be doing at least one per year. One of the things that we haven't taken any steps on, but we plan to work with Megan, just to make sure that our tobacco license is actually bringing in enough of a fee to cover our costs, both between the time she has to spend on the licenses each year, and then for the compliance check costs as well, as if, I guess, we don't want to have any licenses be viewed as a money loser for the city. We're not necessarily looking at money on the situation, obviously, but you don't want to be losing money on something like that, either.
Right. So I guess our ask here today is, just from going off of what Mike said, to review the current ordinance that East Grand Forks has, including the compliance check and retailer license fee, and just make sure that those things are updated to be, follow the evidence-based best practices, and then, you know, just make some recommendations for you to consider in updating those ordinances, as well as reviewing your current clean indoor air policy and, or ordinance, and updating that to include e-cigarettes in all indoor establishments. Any questions for us?
Any questions? Has, have you been to the county, and have they considered passing a countywide ordinance?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we did go to the county board and made a presentation in May. Very similar data and information was shared. And we're currently working with the Public Health Law Center that's reviewing their ordinance to help, you know, guide them in making so that, making it so that the compliance check or retailer fees are up to where they need to be, as well as updating that ordinance with things that need to be updated, just based on the fact that like, e-cigarettes aren't typically included, because they weren't even around when those ordinances were passed. So, yeah, making sure that they're updated to follow the evidence-based best practices.
Do you have much information on second-hand vape?
Well, the studies have found that it is harmful to you, as far as how that may be. It's so new that there really isn't a lot of data out yet. E-cigarettes and the vape, the e-liquid that is used with them actually was only regulated as far as what they could put in them. I think in 2014 is when they first started being regulated. And so for a while, while they were on the market, it wasn't even clear what was being included in, in that vapor and in that liquid. But we are finding that, yes, they're harmful to individuals breathing in the second-hand smoke or vapor as well.
Not any solid evidence, really, yet.
Sure, yeah.
And males have any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Number seven, discussion on penalties for C-license. Mr. Repel?
I think the chief for a little segue into this licensing thing. What I've noted from Megan over the past few, two, three weeks, is a little bit of frustration on her part that there's no backbone to most of our licensing. If they don't get the paperwork in on time, no big deal. Megan will get it done. She'll get it off of the state. This particular case, it's on our liquor licenses. That's just one area, but that's the one I'm going to hit on. What I'd like to see this council do is put a little backbone into her, her process, that she sets a date when she needs this paperwork in, in its entirety, not half now, not half in a week or two, we'll get it to you. That if they don't get it in on time, that we can maybe do some sort of penalty to them, some, some late fee. In this case, maybe double the fee. That might be a good deterrent for them getting their paperwork in on time. We had how many special sessions, two or three that we had to do to vote on additional licensing?
We had one special session, for sure, and we had to amend the agenda.
For a second.
For a second, yeah.
And we shouldn't be having to do that, because people can't get their paperwork in themselves. I kind of look at it, let's say, for instance, driver's licenses. June 30th, that license expires if you don't have it. I'm driving down the road on the 3rd, I'm heading out to the lake, and I get stopped for speeding. The officer says, I need your license and registration. I give them both with a smile on my face, and he comes back, says, I got good news and bad news. Your registration is up to date, but your license has expired. So the $15 or whatever renewal fee that I could have went in and paid, now it's going to cost me $150 or whatever it is, and that hurts a little bit. I just tell them, hey, I'll get the paperwork in next week, just don't give me that ticket. Well, they're going to give me the ticket, no matter what. So I think we need to do something with these. I'm willing to sit down with Megan and go through all the other licenses, too, and find a way that we can apply some pressure to the people to get their renewals in on time. There's no reason that she should be calling them on the phone two, three times to say, hey, can you get your insurance over here? I need it. I got to get this done. Because the state certainly, if she sends it in late, they're going to say, too bad, guess you don't have a liquor license right now, and, and you're going to have to start this process all over. So it's going to hurt them even more. So just want to know if the council wants any action done on this.
For our city ordinances, or whatever, is it possible to assess the late fees on those?
Well, I think, well, right now, I think we would have to modify something to establish a penalty phase, but we certainly could do that. Charter would allow us to do it, any type of administrative fee.
I think what you're asking, I don't think it, I don't think it allows for it right now, but it certainly would be within our rights to amend it to do that.
It could even be a percentage of the license fee.
Correct.
Almost like with your property tax.
We can do anything we want.
Because if it was a $10 license of some kind, you wouldn't want to go $100 bucks?
No, this was just an example.
Yeah, as a percentage, maybe, of the fee.
You may not be as hard as Tim, you know, so.
A businessman, I believe that we run it like a business.
Mr. Tweeden?
I support that. It becomes a nuisance to her and the council. And we have a lot of issues that are important for us, that we have to do. There's things going on constantly. And it costs the city money when we have to do that. And I'd suggest that we certify everything that has to be done for these people. It's the same one. It's, there's a lot of people are late in filing their income tax, they're late in this, and they're late for church and so forth. We might as well teach them a little discipline. If they're in the Army, they'd have problems, I can assure them. They do what they're told to do. But I support, generally, and the city attorney should check and see what other cities are doing. And we're not persecuting everybody. A license is a privilege, it's not a right. And we've been very fair through the years to all these people. And I've been on this council quite a few years, so I've seen lots of people. Many people through the years put aside so much money for licenses. You plan, you're running a business. And we are running a business, we're running the people's business. So I, I support them strongly.
One thought I do have, Mr. Gullston, maybe can answer this, or whoever. With looking at that, could we look at other things that maybe we need to change in there also regarding the license? Is there something for a, if there's other, say, you have a penalty, but maybe there's some other issues that we do have in there, maybe it's a more global look at that process, than just doing the penalty on that, and all of a sudden, maybe six months down the road, maybe we should add this with that also?
I know that we started, and then Megan and I got busy on other tasks, but we were looking at revising, or potentially revising, all fee structures and licensing fees, administrative fees, those types of things. It would be a good time to do that. However, if you think that piecemealing it because of urgency on some other matter, we could, we could do it in, in steps. So, but you're right, I think we, we were looking at raising some of the licensing fees, and then possibly adding some small administrative fees for all, you know, for, for different licenses. I do know that, or recall that there was some opposition regarding licensing all businesses, whether or not there was a fee to do it, just so that we have information on who's actually operating a business in the city. I think that that would be a start, from my standpoint, because I would always like to know who's operating in the city, whether or not they have to come in and get a permit to be able to do so is another, another discussion.
I can run that through the department heads as well, and see if there's anything that they've experienced over the years, or that they can think of that maybe would be nice to have included in an ordinance like that. Just like maybe make it a global, and sort of... Mike, just one comment. I think it's a reasonable thing to do, especially those that are habitually late. I would ask, though, that, this goes without saying, make sure that all of the businesses that require licensing know that this is, this is a new thing, that give them, give them a heads up, that, that they're going to have to pay a late fee or a penalty, so they aren't blindsided by it.
I guess, just talking with Tim about this, right now, all the liquor license stuff is done. I'm going to review all the licenses, see who I'm still missing, because I know there's a couple that I'm still missing. And it's just a couple things going on, I haven't been able to get to it at this time. And I guess my thought was, if we could try and have something in place, so when I send out renewal notices for 2019, once we have something in place, I could something in place, I could send out a letter to all the businesses that currently do have licenses. I have been trying to update our applications, so I get email addresses, so I can send them an email instead of having to pay the postage. But it's just something I'm...
Yep. All, all I would say is, don't make it fine print at the bottom that they have to read. Make it very prominent, so that they know. And, and I, I would agree with Mr. Repel. You don't make exceptions. You just make them aware that this is something that it's their responsibility. If they shirk that responsibility, there's going to be consequences.
I'd like to... Anything in regard to the...
Pardon?
Do you have anything in regard to what Tim brought up?
I didn't hear you.
Do you have a comment on the license penalties?
Well, I just want to say that tomorrow, I think the council, the mayor, and department heads, if possible, should tend sacred hearts, equivalent groundbreaking. It shows support for quality education. There have been leaders in many things, especially preschool. And when people do this, it's, we should support it by our presence. I have nothing else to say.
That was a no. Any males have anything, other than that next Tuesday is July 3rd, and there was a discussion of, normally, we normally don't have, don't have a meeting. In the past, we've maybe not been consistent, but we've moved the next meeting to the following Tuesday.
It's typical, we've had trouble with, particularly when it falls that close to the 4th of July, or we have trouble with a quorum, getting a quorum.
I think it'd be unpatriotic to meet next Tuesday. So the following Tuesday would be the regular council meeting, not another work session.
Correct, sir.
I agree.
That's fine with everybody.
Sounds good.
Maybe someone, don't let Chad know, so let him see what he's...
Yeah.
Any males have anything, and not, is motion adjourned? I'm going to move. I'll watch if he can second by Repel. Any questions? Home papers, the aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried, means adjourned.